Good evening. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is five o'clock. I'm calling this session of the Bastrop City Council to order. We will be moving immediately into executive session. For executive session, item two A, the city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.071, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a proposed development agreement, utility agreement with WB Bastrop Land LLC for the Ironwood Development Project. Two B, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551 and section 551, let me go back, 551.071 and section 551.074, seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the appointment of an interim city attorney. Two C, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.071 and section 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a land lease with the Bastrop Little League, Inc. It is 5:02. Council is in executive session. It is 7:21. City council is back in open session. Relative to item three, two B, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, 551.071, 551.074, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the appointment of an interim city attorney. We have met in executive session. I believe that we have a motion.
I make a motion to hire the law firm of Denton Navarro as our interim city attorney effective today, December 17th, 2024. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer, a second from Councilmember Fossler. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We are also going to be taking up an item to allow for citizen comment before we move back to executive session. Relative to item two C, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.071 and section 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a land, a land lease with the Bastrop Little League, Inc. Madam City Manager, do we, do we have a staff presentation on this, or should I just go ahead and call for citizen, or for comments on this agenda item?
Oh, please call for comments.
All right, thank you. We have Ishmael Harris signed up to speak on this item? No, we do not. I apologize. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this item? I know of, I know of the written comment that we have.
That was it, yes.
Okay. We have a written comment from Christopher Kosho. He does not wish to speak, but he's recording his support of, of, uh, he's recording his support of this item. Council, I think you all have a copy of his, of his comments in here. I will ask you again, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? We're going to go, it's such a, please step forward. If you'll state your name. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, sir. I'm Kate Staton. Lived in Bastrop most of my life, born and raised here. Been part of Little League since I was a little kid. Whenever I started hearing whispers that they were going to go to a different association, I started asking questions as to why that was. Kind of take you through some events that led to this. They failed to have their insurance in place during the fall season. So, because Bastrop Little, or Little League had revoked their charter whenever they failed to interleague with surrounding areas of Smithville.
Can you, can you kind of define who they are?
The old board. The old board of Bastrop Little League.
Thank you.
So, they, they did not interleague with the surrounding areas of Elgin and Smithville. So, Little League regionals enforced a penalty that there would be no tournaments held for All-Stars. And then, whenever whispers started happening that they were going to go to Pony League, Little League revoked their charter. There were still parents that were wanting to stay Little League. Yes, they held a meeting, which was virtual, that anybody that had a opposing comment on the matter was muted and was not able to speak and voice their opinion. So then after that, their charter was revoked by Little League. So, in order to get the charter back in place, a new board had to be elected. So, we held a meeting, elected a new board, realized that there was no insurance for the fall season. So, first order that we took was we needed to get insurance in place. So, we took our meeting minutes to the bank so that we could get insurance reinstated since they were hosting events with no insurance on the fields. Since then, lots of things have transpired, lots of comments have been made, but we have done absolutely nothing besides try to do everything by the book and make sure that there was going to be a league for these kids to play in, because that's really all that matters.
We appreciate your comments.
Yes.
Thank you so much. If you would, if you'll go to the back and grab a citizen comment card, and at least please document your name and address and give it to our city secretary so we'll have, have it as far versus. Yes, sir, please.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Prokop. I'm actually the president of Bastrop Little League, Inc. and BYBSO. I've never met that guy before. He hasn't acknowledged that he is part of this new board, and everything that he just said up here was false. There's a lot of chaos going on. They elected themselves as a board without going through the proper channels and following the proper rules of the constitution of our entity. And that would be the same as if I came here tonight with a piece of paper that says I am now city council. So, there's rules that are set in place. They did not follow that. We had a vote with the community, because that's who we represent, for the kids and the parents that play baseball and softball in this community. They voted that they wanted to go a different route because of everything that was going on with Little League. The cities had that paper. I know Parks and Rec has had that paper since October, and they were given a heads up that this was going to happen. And now here we are today. The main thing we're dealing with right now is to justify the lease that was set in place with Bastrop Little League Incorporated, which is us, to continue to do that so that these kids can have something, have a, a spring season to play. I've been president for two years. I've never seen this guy. So, to say that he's been part of this and wants to do the best for the kids is pretty much the same as the rest of this false group that calls themselves the new board. They haven't done anything to help or volunteer to make this the best that it can be for these kids. We're here for the kids, but this has gotten out of hand to now where the adults are creating problems and drama and chaos. Their only solution that they want to do is split up these kids and have two different entities to try to do this. That doesn't work. That goes against everything that we stand for. These kids are going to grow up and play high school ball together. They might be at different high schools, but being part of this community, the way that it's always been historically, is the way that it needs to be. If there's a problem, anybody who's a member of the league can call a meeting, have the board come through. You have, there's certain provisions that have to take place. The only thing that we're asking for tonight is for the city to make a decision on who can use these fields, because at the end of registration, you're going to find out that everybody who wants to go pony, those numbers are going to be 300 to 400, and they're going to have six to 10 kids that want to play Little League. Now, I'm exaggerating a little bit, but it's going to be a very small group. That's the point we're trying to make. So, instead of dividing this up, we need to come to a conclusion with the city to make a decision on who's going to have access to these fields. That's all we ask.
Thank you. And once again, I'll ask you if you'll fill out a comment card, just so we can memorialize this all. And bear, bear in mind that this, please. We understand passion is running high, so we...
Counsel, thank you for your time. My name's Timothy Bailey. I'm a member of the community. I've volunteered for the last three, four years umpiring in Little League here in Bastrop. Great fields, great kids. I want to make sure that they grow up with the proper influences in their lives. Okay? Just wanted to set a few items straight. So, the Bastrop Little League, the old board refused to interleague, so that means that they refused to play with other surrounding communities. As a result, the tournament was taken away from Bastrop and given to Smithville Elgin this year. They, they consistently, per Little League, failed to follow the rules, filing paperwork on time. They promoted leagues that were not Little League, which again was in violation of the constitution. So, Little League revoked the charter from the previous Bastrop Little League Board, the old board. They held a vote, recognized a new board, which Kate is a member of. The new board started reinstituting the website, signup capability, trying to get everything back in place so that kids could sign up and play baseball in the fall. The, the Little League has also sent a cease and desist order to the old board. They are not to be using Little League in any of their materials or websites or any of the information they pass on to the community. They are not officially recognized by the Little League The, we, as the new board, did actually open registrations, December 4th, for kids to sign up for a spring lead. We look forward to honoring the contract that the city has with Bastrop Little League and ensuring that everybody in the community has a chance to play. Any questions about what leagues get access to the field, it's in the contract. Rentals will take place if necessary. We want to make sure that the kids of the community have a chance to actually play ball in an organized manner with the proper adult influence. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Can I speak?
Yes.
So, I guess in the end, I won't use Bastrop Little League, because I guess they've been threatened to be sued if they use that name. But BYBSO, I think, is the new DBA name from the organization that's kind of always existed here in the area, so I'll use that. But I will say, of everyone that's spoken, of everyone that's spoken...
Matt, would you go ahead and identify your...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Matthew Lassen, a community member. I live here and work here in town. And I will say, besides the current president of BYBSO, everyone that's spoken today, I don't, I mean, there's volunteers, people have helped, but I think I'm one of the only ones in him that have actually coached teams. And I've been coaching for Bastrop Little League, we'll say that in the past, for the, really the last four or five years. I've coached spring, I've coached fall, I've coached All-Stars with them. I really had a lot of engagement with the players over this. And I can say that, I, I know everyone stands up here and says it's about the kids and what they want to do, but I can directly address the frustration of the kids as they've played within the organization over the last couple of years. And these aren't frustrations that I haven't made known to district. I know Nancy, I know Al, I know everyone at District 30, and I've talked to them about it. And the only thing we ever got, because as Bastrop has shrunk, it's lost, District 30, who's the Little League entity over this area, has lost different communities that have played within this league. They've lost Flugerville, they've lost Taylor. And as part of it, Bastrop really now constitutes 80% of this district. So, I get why they're trying to hold on, because it's the kind of all they have. But as we've addressed, as I've talked to them about these concerns, people at the district, what they've said is like, well, when we get Taylor back, the game play will be better. We'll have more teams. When we get Flugerville back. And so, their entire philosophy wasn't to go to Austin, that has more Little League teams, and find us teams to play. It was to kind of just say, well, this is what you got. And as kids get older, the numbers in the Little League get smaller, and the number of teams we have the possibility of playing is diminishing. And I've talked to our league president about it, and finally, we got a league president that's willing to address this issue, to make a point. And he has tried these same things with the league, and we've been met with the same kind of stuff, and so, the same story. And so, as the president has now tried to expand the league, this is where a lot of these problems that I've seen have come into about insurance and this and that. It was never, it was never a problem when we were just upset but still only playing Little League. And I don't know if you know this, but like, for ages 13 and up, all we have to play is ourselves. And if we're getting 18 kids to sign up, we've got two teams of nine. Like, if you're playing a 12-game season, that's a pretty frustrating season for a bunch of 13-year-olds. And now Little League comes in saying, oh, but now we can do this. Now, and there's all kinds of solutions they're presenting right now. They have had, from what I've been talking to them about, the last five years to figure this out. And they haven't done anything about it, until all of a sudden, they're going to lose 80% of their membership. And so, it seems like it's a lot of made-up stuff. The people spearheading this, I think it's their daughter who's actually the president of the new league. Like, they talk about community members that have reached out. I haven't seen emails. I haven't heard anything. We don't have numbers. Like, it's a power grab. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And again, I ask you to fill some out. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Mr. Lassen, I have a question. So, you said the problem statement was that there's not enough teams to play. Say if you're 13 and up, there can just, you can fill two teams and they can play themselves. And that's the problem that you were dealing with. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
From the kid frustration standpoint, it's...
Right, right. So, how does the Pony League help with that?
So, and again, I don't have, I know, I don't have the entire Pony guidelines. I mean, what I can tell you is that the president we have now is the first president that's actually gone out and found us extra games to play, so we can have a diversity of teams to play with. I know with Pony, there's greater leeway in creating more advanced teams if you want to play that way. I've spent a lot of time looking at Pony Leagues in Austin, the way they're organized. And you can, you can sign up for more of a select competition tournament-style play, or you can sign up for purely recreational baseball. Like, Pony is there to take care of all the kids with disabilities at different age levels and make sure they have an inclusive experience in baseball. None of that's changing. And, but it also gives you the ability to, if you want, if you have kids that want to play more advanced baseball, to enter other tournaments. Now, Little League may turn around and say you can do the same thing, but where were these solutions two years ago when we were asking for them? Like, I don't know they can do it, but they certainly didn't give us the option.
So, do you know how many additional teams you have access to by, I mean, like, your, your, uh, season schedule?
I can say that I...
Six, you said? Okay.
I mean, I can say this, that like, I, my son has been playing a lot of select baseball in Austin through kids that grew up through a Pony system, and there are as many teams as we want to find in Austin. And there's Little League teams there, too. I'm not saying there aren't. But like, again, like, finally, we have someone who's willing to take the lead and find solutions, and we're chopping them down at the knees. Like, he's, you know, the community's in, going in the right direction, and, you know, there's always those that want to pull you back down, because it's not what we've always done. And it's frustrating.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would love to be able to say that it's up to the city council to mediate the differences between the, the two entities. Unfortunately, that is not our task. Our task is to ensure that we mitigate the exposure of the city in this, but we will try to do what's, what's right. If, Council, if you have no further inquiries on that, I'm going to suggest we move back into executive session to take up this as well as the other items. We've already read those. Councilmember Meyer?
Mayor, I believe, Mr. Staton, did you want to answer a question that from, that was...
Yes, I would just like to answer. He asked a question on...
Wait till you get up to, to the microphone, please, sir.
So... I, I believe Mr. Kirkland asked a question of, you know, what other opportunities that Pony possessed. Well, some of the, you know, one of the things I hear that they're saying is it offers more teams and, you know, more places to go play. Well, first off, the paperwork was not filed to be able to go play Elgin or Smithville. In that age group, yes, I will say that there's probably not teams at Elgin or Smithville to play. But there are many other avenues. But the president, it takes filing the paperwork and going and finding those teams, because they are out there and they are willing to play. Because I went through that, and through that age group whenever I was there. And there are teams out there to play. It just takes you taking the initiative and going out there and finding them. You don't have to go far.
Thank you, sir. Once again, no other comments or the questions. Here, we will be moving back into executive session. It is 7:39. Council is in executive session. It is 8:18. Bastrop City Council is back in the open session. On item two A, I believe I have a motion.
Yes, I make a motion to direct the city manager to bring back a resolution at our next meeting approving the development agreement with WB Bastrop Land LLC.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Any questions? None indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item two C, where I believe I have a motion also.
I motion to exercise the 30-day cancellation term of the field usage contract and direct the city manager to sign a license agreement with any and all groups with field usage proportional to the number of kids that sign up by January 31st with each qualifying entity after legal review and approval.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion, questions? None indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes. Yes. Mayor, I think it's important for the folks, not just in the audience, but the folks at home, to understand what that means, that we are not specifically preventing any child from playing baseball or use of the fields. What we want to do is ensure that everybody has fair and reasonable access to the fields. As for our agreement with LCRA, and the proportional clause is if one group has more or the other, we want to make sure everybody has equal access to the fields as it relates to the number of children who are going to be playing on those fields.
Want to be able to, want to be able to optimize the usage of, of that, of that field. We've, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've taken a vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. We will move on to item four, citizen comments. At this point in time, I have one citizen comment, uh, signed up. Dax Haverlack.
Dax Haverlack, 779 Peach Creek Road, Rosanke, Texas. We had a really great parade season. If you were in Elgin, you got hail. If you were in Smithville, you got snow. And if you were in Bastrop, you got at least warm rain. So, I want to thank everyone from the three cities, especially Bastrop, for the staff, faculty, making it all happen and, I don't know, continuing on with a great season. So, during the parade route, we, I don't know, I got to participate, I got to enjoy. And I want to, like, shout out some colorful characters from the whole parade experience that I would want to consider a Bastrop, like an authentic Bastrop. So, firstly, to the mama bear somewhere on Cedar, who broke out the full three legal names of her husband because he wasn't cheering and having enough festive fun. He had a lot of fun after that. To the guy near Tracy's that was just vomiting. He was just so filled with the festive spirit that people made space for him. Good. To the folks, to the University of Texas freshmen that were throwing stuff back into the parade goers. You can participate next year. You can get a float if you want to throw things. Thankfully, you put a flashlight on some University of Texas kids, they scatter. After the parade loop, as we were going back through Chestnut and Hill, a guy had his beer can and like Wolverine double fisting cigarettes, was directing traffic to stop so that parade floats could actually get across Chestnut, back to the convention center, back to the school. That was pretty cool of you. I don't know, he was like the random New Yorker. Good. Finally, for float 52, they have our record for finding five phones during the parade and then returning all five phones. That's, that's pretty impressive work for someone participating in the float. And then finally, as we were all dispersing for the festivals, at Cedar and Fayette, right above the railroad tracks, is a blind turn. We had six cars go into the ditch. And thankfully, a group of guys were able to pull cars out, pop in rearview lights, and get cars moving down the road. So, that was a beautiful experience of just Bastrop coming together to roll someone's car and family back out of the ditch on the railroad tracks, tracks. So, yeah, we had a great festival season. I saw all three of my cities come together to do a lot of cool stuff together. And I guess our next time together is Mardi Gras. Ooh, that's two weeks, two months away. All right. Thank you all. Have a great holiday.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We will now move into work sessions and briefings. Review and discuss a presentation by Reuse Engineering, Inc., to discuss new methods for wastewater treatment. I've lost, I've, I've lost my city manager to lay out this Madam City Manager, we're moving right on along.
Good. Thank you. Success with the keys. Okay. Mayor and Council, we have been discussing wastewater ad nauseam here. And for the folks at home, you know, sometimes we feel like the sky is falling because the amount of development that is coming our way. I continue to say I don't want to bankrupt the city, and we have to be really conservative and careful about how we plan our future uses. Reuse is a company that has turned the wastewater industry on its head, essentially. And I wanted the council to hear the presentation, not just about how wastewater is redefined, but also, I said at my last presentation, how we monetize certain things. There are things that come out of the wastewater treatment plant that the folks at home may not understand. Poopy pancakes is what I'd like to call them, that make tremendous dirt, make tremendous additives to yard that could be a potential revenue source. The effluent water that comes out can be used in irrigation and a number of things that keeps our river healthy. So, it's an efficient and also an environmentally friendly thing to do, to begin looking at wastewater differently. So, the group here is going to give you a presentation. You're going to learn way more than you wanted to learn about how wastewater treatment plant currently works and how it may work. And so, please, this is supposed to be an interactive workshop. Please ask the questions. And then we'll get to the specific logistics on how we would make this project a success in a very short order. So, Ron, who's going to be?
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Trey Wastorf. I'm with the law firm of Hans Scarborough in Austin, and we represent Train Technologies. And as Sylvia said, that'll get a little bit into how we're going to make this work. But this afternoon, I'm just doing introductions for y'all in order to save time. But we have Jim Johnson and Robert Hanvey from Train Technologies. And then the star of the evening, I think, will be Reuse. And we have with us this evening, Rob Bergen, CEO of Reuse, Randall Nelson, COO of Reuse, Gabby Bolanos, Vice President of Sales and Marketing at Reuse, and Kendall Longbottom, Water Engineer at Reuse. And so, they will all be here, available to answer any questions you might have as they go through the presentation. But thank you. And with that, I think Randall, I think, is going to be first up.
Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much for hearing what we have to say. Yes?
A quick question for you. How long are you going to be speaking?
How long would you like me to speak?
Well, I, I just want to know if we're settling in for five minutes or 20 minutes? I just curious.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm from Louisiana, and I could talk for 10 hours if I, if I were given the opportunity. The presentation takes, if, if I really want to do it well for you, probably takes about 45 minutes to an hour. Do you, is that okay with you? Or would you like for me to try to...
I think that's why I asked.
I, I, I think, considering our, I think a truncated presentation might be desired. I think we have, I, I think we have a packet to study that, because it's going to be like drinking from a fire hose anyway. So, if you just take the exciting parts, I think we'd be much appreciative. Yeah. Yeah. My wife will take and not, anyway, where I'll go there. All right. So, I do want to say, thank you for the introduction, Sylvia. It, it is very much so that we have turned the industry on its head. We, we are focusing, the, the name of Reuse is for a reason. The water quality coming out of our treatment plants should be reused, should be reused. And in fact, I think I could say that for all of Texas. Right now, we're in such a, a demand for water, lack of water, that we need to be looking for innovative ways to...
lack of water, that we need to be looking for innovative ways to use water, find new sources of water. And the one thing that we're going to say, this is the motto we live by. Where many see wastewater as a liability, we see it as an untapped resource. Right now, you, along with almost every other city around here, look at wastewater and it could be a headache, right? It could just be a thing, a problem that you have to work with, you have to deal with. I'm telling you that your wastewater treatment plant is a water resource center. And it can be monetized for the city in a number of ways. But we have to be able to get it there to reclaim that as a resource. So what I'm going to do, I will try to hit the highlights and kind of give you the whys and the hows as quickly as possible and give you some time for questions if you have. All right. Conventionally speaking, conventional plants and every single bit of wastewater treatment really starts with two things. And that is a biological process and a water solids separation process. So it doesn't really matter. Rob has, when was the last, anyway, he's been around a long time. Between Rob and I, we've probably worked on 900 to 1,000 water and wastewater treatment plants. Every single type you can imagine, but they all have these two things in common. They have to biologically take the stuff that comes from us that goes to the treatment plant, and you have to degrade those organics. You have to get rid of those organics biologically. But you also then have to take and separate the water from the solids, right? So many different ways of doing that. We could go through that and don't want to really take all the time to do that. But I want to tell you that the technology we're using is membrane technology. You guys are familiar with membranes, whether you realize it or not, right? If you drink bottled water, you've used membrane technology. Great majority of water that's out there, it uses membranes to purify the water. If you've been on a cruise, guess what? They've used membranes to take the water that you give them and turn around and give it back to you as clean water. So whether you realize, and any ship that you're on these days, that's going to be an extended leave of port, that's what they do. So you've been around the technology for years, you just didn't realize it. But when you apply that technology to wastewater, it changes everything about the whole wastewater gamut and what you can do with it. So what I will tell you is, in most conventional plants, what you get out of that is water that neither you nor I would want to drink, right? It still has some contaminants in it, it still has some viruses, still has some bacteria, even though we do our best to chlorinate it or to somehow disinfect it, it still has some small measure of things in there, pathogens or whatever, that we don't want to ingest. But with the membrane system, we take out all the pathogens. So solids will not make it through. Viruses will not make it through. Bacteria will not make it through. What comes out of the membrane in the wastewater treatment plant is water. It's just water. So now, once we know that we can produce clean water out of that, the questions we really need to be asking, the questions you should be asking is, what do we want to do with that water? Do you want to send it down the creek, down the stream? Do you want to put it into the Colorado River and let somebody else use it down, you know, 50 miles downstream, 100 miles downstream? Do you want to see it go to the ocean? Or would you look at that and say, how do we use this as a resource? How do we use this to monetize and actually make money for the city? So I'm going to give you, this is, so your current plant that you just finished building, 2 million gallons per day plant, all right. I'm not going to take all the time again to go through it, but I want to show you, this is a very simple presentation. If you look at your current wastewater treatment facility, it has the great majority of these components on the left-hand side of the screen. That is a picture of a conventional plant. On the right is one of our membrane plants that will treat the same amount of wastewater. When you use the membrane, we're going to get rid of the clarifier, right? We're going to get rid of any EQ basins. We're going to remove the sludge digesters that you have at your site. You're going to reduce your process volume. You're going to remove the disinfection, that is chlorine disinfection, that whether it's using chlorine tablets, chlorine gas, it can be harmful and it can be very expensive, but we get rid of that. Then we reduce all the equipment that's required. And what you have is a much more simple process, a much more compact footprint. I'm going to show you in just a few slides. The current 2 million gallons per day that you just finished, the footprint of that, if you look at the totality of that footprint, it's about 350 feet by 400 feet in space, right? Our plant is 100 feet by 100 feet. So 350 by 400 versus 100 by 100. Less than a quarter of the size of what you currently have. It's going to save you a significant amount of money. It's going to produce effluent that's going to be clean. It's going to monetize it. So let's kind of run through those. So how the technology works, we're going to actually have a biological process, and we're going to incorporate membranes in this. I'm going to go back to this. Membrane is, when you get to the water solid separation, a membrane is just a way to keep everything that you don't want leaving the system, in the system, and taking the water out. We put a vacuum on the membrane, it actually draws water out of the system, but it leaves the viruses, the bacteria, the solids, all that stays in the system, which we'll address later as sludge, but that's the way it works. So this is a comparison, just to show you how effective the membranes are. Average human hair is about 100 microns. Let's look at a grain of pollen. You know, you have about 15 microns, right? Dust particles, red blood cells, bacteria, viruses, all the way down. And the one on the far left is actually the pore size of our membrane. So 100 microns for a human hair, in order to make it out of that system, our pore size is 38 one thousandths of a micron. 38 one thousandths. Bacteria is not making it out. Viruses will not make it out. Solids are not going to make it out, right? The only thing that's going to leave that system with the water are things that are small molecularly, nitrogen or phosphorus can make it out. But we use the biological process inside the system to degrade those organics. So in essence, at the end of the day, you're going to be getting water that in a lot of ways will meet U.S. drinking water standards. So now you got to, again, we go back to asking yourself, what do you want to do with it, right?
How do you deal with chemical contamination?
Define chemical contamination.
Well, so the molecules of, I don't know, fertilizer or, you know, medicine that someone's poured down the drain or something like that, you know, those are going to be smaller than 38 nanometers and, you know, would make it through this pore. So how do you deal?
Some of them will, some of them won't. It depends on the complexity of it, right? So a lot of your pharmaceuticals will not make it through. Even PFOS, there's different types of PFOS, right? You have your small chain PFOS, your large chain PFOS. Large chain PFOS typically won't make it through. We are right on the edge of ultrafiltration, nanofiltration. So if you get to that point where it's nanofiltration, it's not going to make it through, and we're right on the edge of that. So there may be some things that come through. But again, if you want to make sure you're 100% clean in that effort, you can simply put another membrane behind it, just an RO, a simple RO. But we have produced in many of our systems, we are shown that we can produce absolute pure water, just as easily as, you know, your bottled water that you get. So it's just simply using today's technology, using the things that we have at our availability now to take what is traditionally being relegated to water treatment and applying that to wastewater treatment. So I would say you're going to find that, we've run multiple tests on these, and they will meet U.S. drinking water standards. Now, the question you would have, obviously, Councilman, is, you know, what is in U.S. water standards? And there's things in there, obviously, there's fluorides and chlorides and things in there that, but they're at such a small concentration in the parts per billions or parts per trillions that you see. And that's what this is going to take out. I mean, it's going to be that level of cleanliness.
What cities are using this system right now?
There are cities all across the United States that are using it. The one in Texas is Farmersville. Our first one for municipality went up there. We are working with multiple municipalities around the state now to incorporate this technology into their systems. I think the biggest reason why is people see the need for this. When you get the growth that we're seeing across Texas, especially up in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, especially here in the hill country, maybe Houston, not so much, but the demand for water has put such a stress on the ability to deliver. Most of your cities are looking at this now and viewing this as a way to meet some of those demands.
Councilmember Plunkett?
How about, my understanding is, water that's too pure is not safe to drink. Are we filtering out so many of the minerals that would make it need to be incorporated with higher mineral content? Or tell me how that works.
Yeah. So typically, when you're looking at water that's too pure, that's water that has been 100% run through an RO membrane. So back to your question, there are levels of treatment in membranes. So we're on the ultrafiltration, nanofiltration border, right? When you get into nanofiltration, which is a .001, or it's 1 one thousandth of a micron, right? That's when you're going to be removing everything. Now, over time, yes, you don't want to drink that. If you drink that water directly, you would be leaching calcium out of your bones, right? You'd be leaching magnesium out of your body. But that's not what anyone does. So when you look at this, you have to understand that we're not going that far with it, first and foremost. And then even when we recommend reusing it and all these other ways, it's still going to be blended back in with potable systems, right? Or it's going to be used in areas, for example, irrigation, that it doesn't really matter. Using it in a lot of different streams and avenues that is very much needed for water, but doesn't need that level of treatment where you get to that RO and that purity.
Councilmember Lee?
So a lot of, there's a lot of technology, or there is technology that can test wastewater to determine levels of viruses and other, so, and you're saying that it's going to come out and it's not, you know, there won't be any coronavirus or whatever these other ones are, I can't read because my glasses are on. But there are, that actually, there's benefits of being able to test water so that the city or the county can determine what their levels of virus, viral loads are. You're saying you're purifying the water so pure we won't know, unless you do data analysis before. So does this technology allow for data analysis so that we know what our viral loads are and other things of that nature in our community for health reasons?
Well, the technology itself is technology just for treatment, right? But even in your current wastewater treatment system, you test the influent coming in on a regular basis. So you know what those loads are. Those aren't going to change. Whether you use this technology or any other technology, the treatment is separate from the testing. So you're going to test in front of the system to see what's coming to you. You're going to test after the system to ensure what's going out is what it should be, right? And that's one of the reasons TCEQ has all these testing protocols. So in this case, you would be testing every day on the effluent side. I would also anticipate that you'd probably be testing on the front side every day to see what's coming at you. So it doesn't really matter, the technology. That's not necessarily involved in knowing what's there, other than the fact of, I need to verify. So I'm going to verify on the front end, I'm going to verify on the back end. Those two measurements tell me how effective the system is in between those two points.
All right. Carry on with your presentation.
Okay. So this is basically how it works, if you will. So consider the white part, the membrane, the interior of the membrane, and the dark blue is going to be the wastewater that the membrane is submerged into. Now, you're going to see in the wastewater, you have viruses, you have bacteria, and you have organics. And those organics is the reason that we have the bacteria in there to consume. We want to take all those organics, consume them inside the wastewater treatment plant, and make sure that that's there, but then we're going to filter out. So this is just kind of a simple video that's showing we're actually putting a vacuum on the membrane, and we're pulling water through the membrane, but we're leaving the bacteria behind, we're leaving the viruses behind, and we're leaving all the solids behind to continue that biological process inside the system. So that's a very simple understanding of how it works. But we're going to retain the contaminants and the harmful pathogens. And when you look at the numbers up to the upper right, most of your labs out there, they have thresholds. We can test to this level and only down to this level. So typically, we tell everybody, you're going to be less than 2 milligrams per liter TSS, total suspended solids. You're going to be less than 2 biochemical oxygen a man. You're going to be less than 5 total nitrogen coming through there. And again, remember, nitrogen, phosphorus, those are things that are simple molecules dissolved in water. We still want to have a biological process to consume those, but that, some of that is going to be coming through. Phosphorus, less than 1, and then ammonia nitrogen is typically very close to 0, 0.1, something of that nature. So the more robust you have the biological process inside the system, the better organically you're going to be able to destroy all of those. But the membrane is the final barrier to keep things from moving out. All right.
So to Councilmember Lee's point, the biologic process, that's why it was so important for us to help deal with the Elon Musk companies, to understand what was going in, because the biologics, the bugs, the things that eat the poop and break it down, are very, very sensitive to what they want to eat. That's why it's important that you test what's coming in. A really bad overflow in an industry or something that has too many metals, something like that, can totally destroy the wastewater system. So yes, super daily testing. You can go through the biologics, but the bugs are really, really sensitive to what they like to eat.
And that's a good point. The system, the one thing about a membrane system is, it's still not going to leave the system without making it through the membrane. So biologically, we are doing everything we can to have a very healthy, a very robust biological process in there. You can get chemicals that are dumped in, it doesn't matter if it's a membrane plant or a conventional plant. It's the same thing that you're going to deal with. If you get, someone wants to dump a whole bunch of harsh chemicals in there, it could kill the biology, right? So it's going to harm the plant no matter what. The difference is, with a conventional plant, some of those things can still leave the system. With the membrane, it won't leave the system because we provide an absolute barrier that doesn't allow them to leave the system. So while we do have to mitigate it, and we would have to rebuild the biology over a period of four or five days and get it started back up, in the meantime, you're not putting yourself at risk for having contaminants and things leave the system because you have the membrane there as your barrier. So it, like any other wastewater treatment plant, is subject to upsets, but it, unlike other plants, still provide you a measure of comfort that you know that things aren't going to leave the system. All right. I'm going to run through some of these real quick. I apologize. We're not going to get into all the specifics. Just note, there's two things I really want to point out. Everything here that you're going to see is produced is going to be highest quality that you've ever seen. We're going to have stainless steel water piping, we're going to have stainless steel air piping, we're going to have stainless steel equipment, stainless steel screens, stainless steel sludge press, stainless steel, stainless steel, stainless steel. Highest quality. You're not creating any shortcuts, you're not putting the, your wastewater team at risk through this system. It is going to be the most simple, the most efficient, the most cost-efficient system, but it's also going to be the most robust system, and it's going to be operator-friendly. This is designed to last a very long time. A lot of your other plants that are out there, they're going to use galvanized piping, they can use plastic piping, they can use electrical that is, you know, substandard. We don't cut any shortcuts on the quality of the equipment. I'm not going to take the time, you have the presentation. For the sake of time, I want to get to the very end here. You've seen these. This is just going through the equipment, you've already seen this. Okay. Let me go back, sorry. I went too fast, too far. Let's go back. All right.
Go through the slide.
This is what we're going to be producing.
Go through the slide of what actually goes away. Did you already do that slide? Oh, sorry. I stepped up.
I did. Yes. Yes. This is the water quality that you're going to be producing. Again, the question really becomes, what do you want to do with it? I really challenge you to think of all the different things that the I really challenge you to think of all the different things that the city could use it for. I'll give you some examples, you don't have to take this and run with it, but this is some examples. So some of our utility clients, they actually purple pipe to all their homes in their subdivisions, and they actually put in a reuse water meter at the homes, right? So they're sending the effluent back to the individual homes. They put in a meter, so they're still, the residents are still going to be billed for it, but the residents are billed typically at around 60 to 70% of potable water rates. So for the resident, even though they're going to use it for irrigation, they're still saving money. For the utility, they're not putting this water down the creek, they're actually making money. So they've monetized their system by returning this water for a purpose that it could be used for very easily. Now, there's costing upfront, obviously, as you move forward, you're going to have to determine, you know, how much purple pipe can we do? But I would just, I would suggest that any parks that you have, any recreational areas, any athletic fields that you use, this can be used for. And you could save significantly on your potable water and free that up for a more purposeful intent, right? Use this for some of those type of things. Okay, potential income streams. Again, we talked about this reclaimed water for irrigation, industrial processes or other applications. Again, this is a fully sustainable. One of the other ways that you could look at this is the sludge that is being produced by your system. You can actually turn that into a fertilizer. So the sludge press that we provide you will actually produce a dry cake, almost a powder, right, from the sludge. So sludge is wasted from every wastewater treatment plant every single day. It's just a matter of how much. Well, the sludge press here will produce a dry cake, but you can actually mix that with a lime, a liquid lime, and now you have a Class A fertilizer. So you could actually be producing something that has value to others in the area. The other thing that you can do with this, you can't do it with most other technologies, is you can set up your own sludge receiving station. So if you had to guess, how many plants, wastewater treatment plants are within, say, 20 miles of the city of Bastrop? 30 miles? 20 of them, 30 of them?
At least.
And every single one of those, every single day, has to do something with their sludge. They have to haul sludge off. Most times, they're hauling that away to a large city, city of Austin. You know, they may have to go, I've seen people have to travel as far as 50 to 60 miles to haul their sludge. So as a utility company, and I think Corx would be happy to back me up, they're having to haul sludge every day. And so sometimes those costs for them can be $150,000, $200,000 a year annually to haul their sludge. Well, what if you were taking that sludge for them? Do you know that the average sludge rate that they have to pay just to drop it off is around 12 to 15 cents a gallon? And you could, you could take any excess capacity that you have and you could start receiving that sludge and charging 10, 12, 15 cents a gallon. I think it's the city of Midland charges 18 cents a gallon to receive sludge. So think about it, this is, this is something that the only other place around locally that they can take it to is the city of Austin. You could become a sludge receiving facility and you could be receiving sludge from 20, 30, 40 plants, you know, in the area, and it's a revenue generator for you. So you can, you can monetize the effluent that's coming out, you can monetize your own sludge, you know? You could actually monetize the system by receiving sludge from other facilities. So this technology allows you to do all of those things. Now, I want to go back real quick because I think this is really important, and this is, this is to Sylvia's point. Now, you know what, we're going to do it. I'm going to show you a slide that we put together, you guys have already seen it, I'm sure our audience members have it. But this is currently your treatment plant that you just built, right? And over to the left in that picture is a 2 million gallon per day facility. You can see it in the dotted yellow, right? We're going to go a little further. On the left, 2 million gallons per day. On the right, the one small square is our 2 million gallon per day system. Now, let me ask you, how much onsite labor and how long did it take to build the 2 million gallon per day plant that you have out there? How much concrete did you have to put in? How much underground electrical did you have to put in? How much underground piping did you have to put in? How much grading and excavation and all these other type of things? How much catwalk stairs, railings did you have to put in for that system, right? Our system is going to be a quarter of the size. It is simplified in the sense that all the water movement is inside the system itself. So you don't have a lot of external, you have water coming to it and you have effluent coming out of it. But most of all the other processes are self-contained within the system. So it can be installed in typically half to two thirds of the time. A system of this size, we have estimated that it will take about 12 months from the date that we break ground to we have the system completed, fully completed. Now, the other thing that we do that the others don't, as you've probably already seen, is that we have a covering over the entire system. A full red iron building with built-in cranes to move equipment around, but it's all in the dry. So when the operators are out there, if they have to work on equipment, if they have to, you know, change oil on the blowers, if they have to, you know, change filters, if they have to change, you know, belts or hoses or anything else, it's all in the dry. So it is very operator friendly. It is easy and simple to construct and it's going to produce high quality effluent for you. So back to Councilwoman Lee, I think your question about the municipalities. So one of the largest plants out there right now is the city of Atlanta. The city of Atlanta started many, many years ago looking at membrane technology. They've incorporated multiple different types of membranes in there, but they use almost 100% of all their plants have been converted over to membranes. And you're talking about 400 million gallons a day that they're using. So they recognize, along with New York City and Chicago and LA and all these other large municipalities are realizing, we have to capture this resource, we have to do something with it, we have to improve the environment. The biggest reason the city of Atlanta does it is because of their effluent quality. The Chattahoochee River flows through the, and so is very pristine. They have very tight limits, they have to meet those effluent qualities. And the same thing applies for you, you have the Colorado. When you're looking at the next five years and when you're applying for renewals on your wastewater treatment plant, I can tell you from TCEQ's perspective, all those limits are being brought down further and further. Some of the latest permits that have been issued by TCEQ has phosphorus limits of point one to five. You know, we saw one that was a point zero two five on phosphorus. That's on the latest renewal. So you just have to know that as you go down the road and as these permits are being renewed because of the quality of our streams, the state is tightening down more and more stringent on those effluent qualities. This is a way to future-proof your city from having to worry about, how do we go back in and now retrofit our systems to meet those requirements? These will meet those requirements now. It'll save you money, it'll save you time, and it will actually monetize your wastewater system. Instead of being a headache that you have to deal with, you can look at it as a profit center for the city.
Councilmember Fosler.
Thank you for the presentation. What does this sludge receiving facility look like?
I have one up here.
A stinky facility.
Okay, right here.
And what does this smell like?
Yes, no, very good question, very good question. So right in that center picture there, that is actually the sludge receiving facility. So you see the building over the top of it, right? So as I told you, our plan actually has a red iron building just like this over your entire system. So part of that would be a pumping mechanism with a control panel. So as a driver pulls up, they would have to enter in a numerical code that identifies the driver, they'd have to enter in a numerical code that identifies the company. So the computer is registering this, it knows the time they pulled up, the date they pulled up, it knows the driver, it knows the company. Then, once all that information is registered, he can hit, he can hit start on the computer or on the control panel. It will actually vacuum out their truck for them in a completely enclosed, so there's nothing that's going to be spilled, right? He uses your hoses, he hooks your hoses up to his truck, your pump pumps it, his truck empty, and it goes straight to the lift station. So then, at the end of the month, your Excel spreadsheet will kick out telling you how many trucks came in, who they were from, how much they pumped out, et cetera, so you can automatically bill that to the respective hauling companies.
Gotcha, so this is like a separate footprint from the?
It's going to be, it's going to be included in that area. We're not 100 by 100, but it's about a, I would guess, probably about a 25 foot by about 60 foot area that would be separate. Now, the question becomes, and this is really for your public utilities director to answer, do you want them actually entering into your facility through the fence? I doubt that's the case. I would imagine you would want that on the outside of the fence so that, you know, your, your site is still protected. You don't want people just having access to your facility. So it would be somewhere to the, on the outside of your main fence area. But we would create a place for them to be able to pull in, drop their loads off, and then turn around and pull back out.
Okay, thank you. My other question is like, what is the cleaning the membrane or changing the membranes or changing the filters? What is that process like and what waste is produced from that?
So there's no waste produced from it, but it is an automated process that the membrane works at a certain pressure, a negative vacuum, if you will. So once the system, about every four to six months, you know, bacteria, other things are kind of building up on the outside of the membrane. Once that negative pressure says, hey, it's getting a little bit more difficult to pull the water through, it'll alert the operator, the operator will be on site, they will actually initiate a process that just simply backfills them, takes effluent that's coming out, mixes it with sodium hypochlorite, chlorine, if you will, then backfills the membranes, lets them sit for two hours, and then the system turns on. Now, you'll only do one or two or three banks of membranes at a time, you can't do the whole system. Obviously, the system will shut down. But it'll take effluent from the banks that are running, send it back in with chlorinated water into the internals of the membranes that are shut down, and it's an automated process. They never have to come out of the water, they shouldn't come out of the water. You should expect a life on those membranes of somewhere between 10 and 15 years. We have systems running up in harsh environments in New York, Pennsylvania. The oldest one in Pennsylvania has been running since 2006. And this past year, they just replaced all the membranes in that system. So they were running for 17 years before they had to replace them. Now, what we've done, what we're providing for you is a, a full consumption analysis of every, every single component of your operational cost in that plant. And one of those cost components is going to be, when do I have to replace all the different pieces, right? So it's, it's just like if I wanted to drive a car for 20 years, there's going to be times when I'm going to be replacing various equipment. So the membranes are going to be replaced at certain intervals. The, the pumps have certain replacement values at certain intervals, the, the blowers will be replaced at certain intervals, et cetera. Every piece of equipment in there, including a lot of the controls, will have points in, in time where they're going to be replaced. So the costing that we provide you shows you at what points those are, gives you an average lifespan and an average annual cost so that you can budget that into your wastewater program.
Mayor President Kirkland.
Got a number of questions, some of which you've answered already. So one I wrote down was how long to install, you said half to two thirds of a traditional plant, about 12 months maybe. And then, do you install? I think the answer to that is yes, right?
We would oversee all of the construction, yes. Now, we would, we would provide most of the onsite labor. Our team would, but there are things that we don't perform. We don't do the concrete, we don't have enough people to actually do it, so we'll hire, sub that out, things of that nature. But we'll do all the electrical work. We will install all the components, internal and external to the system itself. We'll have the building built by a contractor who builds red iron buildings. So there are small portions that will be subcontracted, contracted out to contractors who specialize in those things. And most of those are going to be items that are just too big or too large, you know, for our team to do. But everything else, we self-perform.
What is the design process look like for kind of planning out one of these? And is it kind of like a standard installation that you just scale based up on the size or is it completely custom?
No, it's, 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 if you see a two, if you see a 200,000 gallon per day plant that I showed you and a 2 million gallon per day plant, pretty much the same, right? It literally just shrinks or grows. Now, configuration of the tanks changed based on biology, based on footprint, things of that nature. So while the system may be, you know, slightly, you know, like this one may be completely square, though it may be oblong, the process is still the same. We're still going to have a circular process with anoxic aerobic membrane, we're still going to have the same equipment. Equipment's just going to get bigger, same controls, just larger, same building, just larger. So to that end, we're able to, I, I could tell you today with confidence that if given the authority to do so, we would have a treatment plant ready for you probably within five months. We would have all the engineering completed within five months.
And do you, do you grow one plant over time? Or do you build it to a fixed size and then just do multiple of them?
That's really kind of a design concept that we work with you on. So we listen to the client's needs, right? In, in this particular case, we've done multiple phases. I don't think it makes sense to build one 6 million gallon per day plant. I think you should build multiple trains. But does it make sense to maybe go ahead and spend the money upfront and build all the concrete tankage for the first three or first, you know, two million gallon per day plants? Sure, I think it, you know, there's some cost savings that can be had there. What we try to do is, based on the experience that we have, based on what your needs are, we can work together to come up with a plan that not only fits the immediate need of the first phase, but then looks at how do we, how do we best design this for, you know, future phases? So for example, I'll go back to one of the slides that I showed you. So here, this is a good example. So at the 12 o'clock position, you see up there an equipment skid that has the screens and it has a sludge press, right? Well, this is a 200,000 gallon per day system. Now, with your 2 million gallon per day plant, you're not going to have one skid that has your screens and your sludge press on one skid. What you need is you need a central location for all of your screening and a central location for all of your sludge processing. Similar to what you've done with the first 2 million gallons per day, something that is planned out more looking forward, right, in the future forward. So what we've already taken the liberty to do is plan out some, basically a screening location with all your screens located in one place for two, four, six, you know, million gallons per day, whatever the case may be. And we've looked at the same from the sludge press. It makes sense to have all the sludge presses together in one location so that you can maximize efficiencies. So we would suggest, okay, set aside this area for screening, this side for sludge, and then you have your process basins and you can build out those process basins as you feel the need to. One of the things that I think as you look at going forward is the growth rate that's coming as well as what is TCE going to be, TCEQ going to be doing five years from now? How do we get ahead of that and what parts can we install now that will keep us from having to encounter some of those tighter limits? So it's a conversation with every single client we deal with. We isolate for two or three days, we go over multiple different concepts, and we listen and get feedback, and most of that's going to be from your public utilities director and your wastewater guys because they're the ones that are going to be in there. But it's also going to be from somewhat, from representatives from the council. Sylvia's office is going to say, well, we see all that, but we have a financial impact here as well, so we need to be giving input on that. So we just kind of work with you guys. We have set designs that we know work, but then those can always be modified based on your independent needs.
In your experience, how much does one of these systems cost compared to a traditional wastewater treatment plant?
What we have seen in the past, when you get into this size, we're typically going to be somewhere between 15 and 20% less than a conventional plant. And, and I will say this with a caveat, I'm going to look back up at the screen, right? I will tell you that our equipment will cost more than the equipment from a conventional plant. Again, top shelf, you know, don't get into all the details, but every piece of equipment in there is highest quality. And it's all stainless steel, so our equipment is going to cost more, all right? But I go back to the picture where we have them side by side. When you get to the onsite construction and all of those other aspects, whether it's concrete, whether it's electrical, whether it's grading and excavation cost, whether it's, you know, any of those other type of things, we're saving you 70 to 80% of the cost of all that. onsite labor. And not just the cost of that onsite labor, but we're also saving you the time. Imagine again, the time it would take to build that other plant again versus putting all of it into one more simple solution.
In a relicensing scenario where TCEQ lowered the limits of some chemical in the water and our current plant didn't meet that, would we take the output of the existing plan and put it into the input of this system and push it through? I mean, what would you...
Well, you could, but in my professional opinion, that's going to be a waste of energy to try to do that. I think what you, what should look like at that point is just putting some kind of secondary filtration on the backside of that plant to meet that. Now, the other thing that you can do, and we have seen this time and again, let's say, for example, you had 4 million gallons per day running through our systems with this level of quality, and yet your older plant here is just a little bit out of balance. When you blend the two together, obviously, you're diluting that so that maybe the diluted total then will actually be in limits.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah. The only one of mine that was left was control, you know, the building that you see at the very top of our plant is, you know, the control room and all that kind of stuff. How different, is that facility still going to be adequate and, you know, to handle yours as well? Is it going to be a, and maybe this might be a question for Curtis, I'm not sure. How does the operations of the two different types of plants, is that going to be, you know, what kind of issue is that going to, do we need another control room for this new type, or how's that one?
No, you'll need another computer, but you don't need another control room. So in your system now, you have full SCADA on everything. I'm sure Curtis can see every aspect of his plant, right? And he could probably see it remotely. If he wanted to pull up his laptop, maybe he could see everything that's going on there. Same thing here, has full SCADA built in. But all you need is in that same control room, you'll just need a separate computer. Because the computer that is there now probably has proprietary software, and it's all tied into that SCADA system. Whereas ours would be a separate type of SCADA system, but it'd be the same thing. It's just no more control room, just a separate computer. And he can see and control everything from the computer there. Or if you allow him, he can do it from his house if he wanted to. But, you know, that's, you know, that, it can be controlled and viewed from any remote location, you know, via wireless connection.
Councilmember Meyer.
So the return, even if the investment on the equipment is more expensive, but the return on the investment, because we're producing potable water and we're producing sludge that can be fertilizer, is offset quite a bit, right? Because, and not just looking at it monetarily, but the investment that we're putting into the environment is also worth a lot to consider. So money's a huge thing, and I think it's great, but we're very limited, and we know that. Water is our biggest resource and it's not unlimited, right? So I think that the offset with the cost, the ROI because of the sludge and the potable water, but also just a responsible way to move forward because we're not going to be able, when we know better, we have to do better. And this is pretty exciting to see future green things that are good, that don't do more harm than what we've been doing. So, yeah.
Right. And I would...
So it's not, I just want to be real clear, it's not potable at the end of it. We still have to, he might want to drink the glass. I don't know that anybody likes it.
No, I get that. But the treatment for landscaping and all of that is a big savings because we're using such good water now to do that. So that would be much more available for potable, right? Potable would be, yeah.
Right. And I would reemphasize that the total cost of an installed system is still going to be less than a conventional. It's just there's the two components. You have the equipment side, which is going to be your membranes, your blowers, your pumps, all the mechanical side of things. And then you have your installed price, which is all the concrete, the labor, the electrical, those type of things. So while the equipment may cost more, your total package is still going to come in less. Yes, ma'am?
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So that's what I want to know. What is the cost? You're saying it will be less, but, well, you have the screen up. Because when you were initially talking about this screen, you said 2 MGD, but it says 6 MGD on the slide. And City Manager, I want to, to make sure I'm clear, we're looking at this as an option for the second phase, right? And if I recall, previous emails, we were looking at about $10 million for what was being proposed for that second phase.
$10 million for only the engineering.
That's what I thought, only for the engineering. So we, this would still go through that engineering process?
No.
No?
It's a difference.
We wouldn't do an engineering study for this?
We would do engineering, but it's included in the package. The engineering that was part of the other wastewater treatment plant was also tying back some master plan components that said engineer who would be designing had also worked on. The other plant, as described in emails to me from our prior director, was anywhere from 100 to 150 million.
Build that with, that would be the total, 100 to 150?
That would be adding another 4 MGD.
For four.
Which would bring us a total of six.
But, and do we have any kind of estimate on what something like this would cost?
We do. We have some estimates. What I will say is, I know that there's discussions on whether it's going to be 2 MGD, 4 MGD, 6 MGD, right? So, and also I come back to what the mayor, Proton, Proton Mayor said, you know, how do we incorporate, you know, what does that look like from an engineering standpoint? So we want to work with you. We want to make sure that we meet your needs. We want to make sure we get it right. So while I could give you an overall budget number, two things that I really need. Number one, I need to know what you want to do. Do you want to do a 2 million gallons per day? Do you want to move forward with four? Do you want to move forward with six? Because when you look at the difference between a two and a six, the biggest cost difference is not in the equipment because the equipment's going to kind of cost the same across all three, right? It's the same equipment. Where you're going to save money is where you're going to be mobilizing vendors like concrete vendors and where you're going to be mobilizing grading and excavation type vendors, where you're going to be putting up multiple buildings, right, all at the same time. So when you look at that, that's where you're going to get a lot of cost savings from doing a 6 MGD versus a two. And those costs are going to be completely different. It only takes us probably about three to four days to come up with a good costing number for you, once we know where you want to go, what is going to be the plan of action, and we can put together something for you. So that's number one. Then I think the second thing is, on the costing analysis, I'll just give you an example, all right? This is what you refer to. So the $10 million for just the engineering for the next 2 MGD, our cost of engineering for the same thing is about 900,000. So $10 million versus 900,000. Why is it so much less? Again, I want to point to that, what you see up there. When you think of all the hours that someone has to put into designing that system, when you've got all the technical going everywhere, when you've got all that underground piping going everywhere, when you have multiple, you know, concrete structures that you have to, you know, account for, all those type of things adds complexity to the engineering, right? Whereas with ours, it's an extremely simple design. So the simplicity of it and the fact that we can scale these up and down, you know, it allows us to do it in a much quicker timeframe. So by reducing the number of hours we put in on the engineering, by doing it in a quicker timeframe, we're able to save you money on the engineering cost. So you're going to pay probably 10% of the engineering that you would pay for someone else by going this methodology. And again, it is included in all the costing that we provide for you, you know, when we get to that point.
So Councilmember Lee, just to be real clear, this does not negate our need to update the wastewater plan because things have changed completely. Now with the expansion of the line to 1209, the highest and best uses from 1209 all the way to 71, that's changed dramatically, even from three years ago, what we thought was going to go there. The proposed residential developments on the other side of 969 that are, you know, in the thousands of units, that has changed significantly. The discussions that we have at a comp plan level and the discussions we have about densities, lot size, minimums and those things, those are going to change the input. So we still need to go back to what was a proposed number by Fries and Nichols and see if that even matches anymore. Do those numbers even make sense? The other thing that this product or this project is eligible for Water Development Board money. It's eligible for some other federal grants from a bunch of different entities. And two, Correx isn't sitting in the audience just for not, and I like Correx, but remember, they're our partner. We have to be able to serve what is coming down. And so one of the commitments that we have is, okay, we're going to partner with this, and that means a cost share. We can't bear it alone. That area that we have to serve CCN for wastewater is huge. And this would be one of the first cities I say, er, timeout, I'm giving up the CCN because I can't serve it because it's just too expensive to serve. We're talking about impact fees. Planning Commission will hear that Thursday. You guys will hear it in your first week of January. All of those things make up all of the bits and pieces that'll lead us to a decision.
Councilmember Fosler.
Just one more question, please. Have you ever had a client try this technology and then go back to the old way? No?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just checking.
Our P and Z chair is sitting in the audience. I just want you to know that. This is his industry. So, you know, also, folks that are in the audience who are really interested in this is...
If I may, I would, Darren, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you want to come and give your, I mean, you work with Correx, you work with Nexus, give your opinion?
Looks like you put him on the spot anyway.
I did.
Thank you. I'm Darren Barker. I'm the Vice President of Correx, of Corporate Development. We used to be Correx. We're now Texas Water Utilities. We went through a merger with Southwest recently. But we're in the utility business. We've got wastewater plants in this area. We've got wastewater plants all over the state. And we see this product as a game changer for us as well. We're actually looking at several projects using the reused plants right now. And, you know, we've worked with Sylvia quite a bit, you know, working out the SpaceX deal. I think we came up with a great solution that's going to be good for everybody. But this is, these are big projects that we're going to have to do. And I truly consider this a partnership with the city. And as y'all get into this, you know, there's, there may be some cost sharing that we can work out to, for capacities that we may need for all that service out there. So we thank you for the openness, and we look forward to working with you potentially on something like this as well.
We appreciate the partnership, that's for sure.
Thank you.
That's for sure. A couple, I have a couple of questions. Through the series of conversations, you've already hit on the redundancy, on the sustainability. On the training and technical assistance, I would imagine that's within your package?
It is. So we'll be doing full training for your personnel. The other thing that we're doing as a company, and we're partnering with Nexus, Correx, we're going to be building a state-of-the-art training facility for operators up in the Salado area. So it'll be a place where we have one of these plants. They'll be able to come and train, hands-on training there at that facility, not just one time, but as you, look, I'm going to be honest, wastewater operators, there's toner, there's turnover, 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 right? There just is. And so anyone that's coming in new, they need to come up there. So we make it our goal, because if these plants don't run right, if they don't work right, it looks bad on us. So it's our goal to install a state-of-the-art training facility in partnership with TCEQ so that we can train the next generation of operators to do just this.
Appreciate it. And for clarification, you were talking about Atlanta, Georgia, not Atlanta, Texas?
That is great. Yes, you're right. I'm so sorry.
Want to be clear on that. Council, any other questions? We have one person wishes to speak on this item. Councilmember Plunkett.
I just wanted to ask real quickly, you said at one of the plants in Salado. So is there an operating plant right now in Salado?
We are, we are going through, we're getting ready to start the design on that system itself. It's probably going to be, in all honesty, about 18 months out before, you know, we have that plant even close to being operational, but it's in the works. But it won't be the only one. We'll have training facilities. Again, we're working with TCEQ. We're trying to get Texas Tech on board, and they're very excited about it. But we're trying to get multiple training facilities up and running. We'd be open to the idea of having a training facility here, you know, for training operators. So, you know, if that's something that you'd be open to, we'd welcome that as well.
I'm only one vote, but...
Mayor Proton Kirkland. So this is a question for our City Manager. Can we have a planning workshop to discuss the flows of our wastewater needs now and in the future? I'd like to know more about, you know, average volume per household, how many households, how many neighborhoods, you know, now, future, where those are divided amongst the plants, you know, just some understanding of where we are, what our percentage levels are in the two plants that we have, and kind of look at it with that engineering perspective and see, you know, when do we need to do something next?
Absolutely. We have a council meeting scheduled January the 14th. It's already pretty doggone full, but...
We can do it another time.
The 15th is fairly open, so if the council would like to see that invitation in their mailbox, that's a Wednesday. We could do it that Wednesday afternoon.
Well, we have enough data to share at that point, or is there...
We have a tremendous amount of data for Fries and Nichols already, and Hudson's been working on the data. And as we have developments that are either coming online or at least speculating, we always know that if one developer comes to speculate, it may be the third who actually makes it come to fruition. And so if there's already, you know, chum in the water, we're going to count that too because it will end up coming to fruition at some point.
Thank you very much. And you are a rock star. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Obviously, if you have questions, I'll be around. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have one person scheduled to speak on this. It is the Chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission, Ishmael Harris. I think we all recognize you.
I guess for the audience, right? All right. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, council members. My name is Ishmael Harris. I reside here in Bastrop, Texas. There's a lot I was taking in back there. So just for everyone's knowledge, I have 20 years in wastewater experience. Four and a half of those years are at the plant where he was referring to as far as receiving the sludge and the solids, horns we bend. So we do a lot of solids treatment. I just want to highlight some things, kind of talk about a few things. Let's see. In my years of experience, I've worked with a lot of construction projects, rebuilds, upgrades, things like that. I, for one, I'm not the biggest fan of first technology and new technology, right? It always comes back and gets you. But not saying that it doesn't always work. Just to kind of help you out on a few things, things that they're looking for and influence their testing are COD, TSS, and ammonia. They want to make sure that those levels are low coming in, or they're looking for those, and to reduce those going out. And you're going to be testing for your TSS, your BOD, and your ammonia going out. Those are going to be the big things that are permanent things for TCEQ. John, Councilmember Kirkland, to your question, .17 pounds of BOD per person per day is what's contributed to the treatment system. So, and the reason they do the BOD is it takes a little bit longer on their test. The COD is more instant, so you can know what's coming in to be proactive in treating that before it goes out of the plant into the streams. So just to, so you know that. Couple of things, though, just want to consider or to think about is, again, yes, the cost is good, but what are the long-term effects of it? We do need better treatment here. We do need an upgraded process. When it comes to this, we can always tell citizens to, hey, you know, turn, you can't turn your faucet on, boil your water, right? We cannot tell people to not waste, right? So we have to make sure that we have a system set up, not just for now, but in the future. And with the growth that we're seeing with Bastrop going, I think we need to definitely look ahead 20 to 25 years, if not longer. I think the size that they're, you know, talking about is good. My question is, how many plants do we really, are we, will we actually have? I know with the conventional plant, what it might cost and build, but I would like to also look at long-term effects, again, cost-wise, maintenance-wise, what is it going to do staffing-wise to have these multiple facilities? Having a... Having a sludge-receiving station is a good thing, but it's also, again, manpower, right? There are options. What we do, what you can do with the treated sludge, like I say, you can't use that for fertilizer. But typically, well, what happens at our plant is, once we receive the sludge from the treatment plants, we thicken it up, we digest it, and then we de-water it. And then, from that point, a private company comes along and takes that sludge, and they use it for multiple reasons, multiple uses, and different types of fertilizers. And they screen it down, they combine it with mulch. The freeze helped out a whole bunch with us being able to do that up there. But those are things that you can use. The reused water can be used for irrigation, sports fields, farm use, and that's a real good way also of getting rid of the metals in the water because it'll go up into the atmosphere. But I just want to say, think a lot when doing this, jumping fast with, on projects because, no disrespect to y'all, but when people come in and say, hey, things are just as great, it's all a great sell pitch, and then things come back and bite you in the end. I advise taking time and reviewing what they're going to offer. Really look at the design of the plant and how well it would work for us. And also, March 18th through 21st is Texas Water, right? If any of y'all got that opportunity, you can go there, and there's plenty of things that you can learn about the technology of wastewater treatment. I've been to several of them. I've been to Weet and, I mean, Webtech in Chicago, which is an international thing. And so, I've heard 20, 15-minute conversations from guys like this, and they're all, all their presentations sound wonderful, right? But I just advise to look into what we're trying to do, how well it's going to help. I'm all about contributing and helping out the environment, minimizing the footprint, right? But again, just take things into consideration. And I'm always available for any questions that you guys may need, any help or whatever. I really like doing this. I've actually had the luxury of designing new things at both plants I've worked at in the last few years. And I can tell you, those designs of those plants, I know this is like a cookie cutter type thing, but those designs of the plants don't happen quick. Anything that happens quick with the design of the plant comes back and takes a big bite out of you in the end. And what you end up doing is spending more money because you have to make modifications and adoptions to your process because you didn't equate for what's coming. So, just like y'all, to keep those things in mind. And again, I'm available for anything that you need pertaining to this or anything else. But 20 years, I'm pretty knowledgeable in it, so, all right. Thank you.
And he's got the best immune system ever.
We...
Yes.
We appreciate it. We know, we know there will be a lot more discussions in all this.
Mayor and council, in the audience is also Train, who is one of the methods for potential financing of a project like this. And so, if you want to introduce anybody, go ahead.
Sure. You're Mayor Nelson, councilman.
Good evening.
My name's Jim Johnson. I'm with Train Technologies. If you'll indulge me for the next 45 minutes to an hour.
I doubt that.
Don't worry, I'm a former Marine. Brevity is kind of a strong suit of mine. Keep this to less than five minutes. So, I'm with Train Technologies out of St. Louis, Missouri. I cover the entire Midwest for public infrastructure. Typically, everybody associates Train with, hey, you're any units on the outside of my house, or we've got one of your chillers in our building. I don't do a lot of that. I actually help public entities solve problems and solve them in a very, very cost-effective, timely manner. We have a very specific mechanism that we use for public entities called the Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. What that allows us to be able to do, it's a contract that was awarded to us two years ago where we battled against all of our peers, and we were found the best value, best price, apparent winner. And what that allowed us to do, since we competed for that contract, it satisfies the public bid requirement for any state, city, town, or municipality. That's a very, very valuable proposition to public entities solely because of the amount of time it takes for you all to be able to solve problems. And first and foremost, I need to congratulate you all on the amount of growth that you brought to the city of Bastrop, and I can't imagine the headaches that's created for this council and the mayor. Specifically with us partnering with reuse, where we can really be the greatest benefit is typical, typical public procurement goes, select your engineer, negotiate with them back and forth. That can be a short or very, very lengthy process, depends on scope, scale, cost, everything else. You allow them to be able to do full design, give them keys to the kingdom, and then, once you get to a point where they have issued for construction drawings, they send that out to everybody and their brother that is a contractor, equipment purveyor, automation specialist, whatever the case, and everyone fights for the lowest dollar technically acceptable solution to be able to win the work with the assumption that there's a hole in your contract. Everybody knows that you can't manage everything on a legal document, which is why a lot of contractors have massive legal firms that represent them or in-house, because change orders are very, very valuable. So, where we eliminate that risk is you all would sit down with us as either a contract administrator, general contractor, whatever the term, the best suits the city. And what would end up happening with us, since we already satisfied the public bid requirement, is we partner with reuse. Anyone else that needs to do the engineering effort for developing your wastewater treatment facility, whatever size that may be, you all get to pick. We bring them under our contract, we negotiate terms, you all, we all sit around a table and say, we like these guys, we don't like these guys, these are showing greatest and best value. We bring the people that you all are interested to, to the table. And have a creative discussion instead of doing everything behind closed doors where everything immediately becomes litigious or adversarial. What would then end up happening is, under my contract, and this is where it gets really interesting, because of the fact that you all would partner with us, you all typically have to do almost a two-appropriation step where first is be able to pay for all the engineering, and second is pay for the project. With us, because of the fact that you're entering into our sole source, sole source, design-build contract, whatever engineering partners you all are bringing in, we are going to take that on at risk to ourselves, so you don't have to do an appropriation for engineering. Because of the fact that we're expecting this to all be a very, very collaborative process and then roll those engineering fees into the overall offering at the end. If you all were to back out, not enter into the contract, whatever the case is, the only thing that we'd ask in return is that you pay for our engineers' time, effort, and a predefined amount that is what's called our project development agreement. Where it really makes sense, though, is in contracting. Once everything starts moving and the design gets to roughly 60%, we can start ordering all your long lead time equipment. Whether you're needing skated, ton of stainless steel, start ordering concrete structural steel, which is getting ready to get expensive and getting ready to start a very, very long lead time process. We typically shave off nine months of the procurement process and construction time because we've all, we're all in agreement, if what's being ordered, we order it. And then, everything moves through. The other nice part is there's two key, two key parts besides being able to order a 60% design. Our contract switches over to guaranteed max price or will be termed GMP. That means no change orders. If we've missed something, you all have missed something, we collaboratively have missed something, that is our issue, not you all's, because we're supposed to be the professionals designing for you. The other big piece is, we have, it's a national contract for the Omni Partners Cooperative Purchases Agreement. We actually have to abide, even though it's adopted by the state of Texas, we have federal flowdowns, which means we have to deal with a book that's about that big called RS Means, and we have to cost justify everything we do. From, that's how much a door costs, or that's how much light fixture costs, that's how much a brand-new tank costs. We have to cost justify everything you do. So, not only do you get our very, very quick, seamless construction method, you also get passive cost controls that none of you all have enough time for because you're fighting every single other battle and then delivering your best value to be, to all the citizens and taxpayers of Bastrop. Once everything goes through, you all have an up-and-working plant that's typically nine months to a year and a half ahead of your typical procurement and construction phase. And with you all, this kind of growth that's going to come down, it's going to come down very quickly, and nothing is getting cheaper. And with the customer that you all have entering into the, into the city, times typically the essence, of the essence, we can be a very, very solid tool to be able to help you all get what you want, at the cost you want, with the timing you want. So, I know this is our first conversation, first engagement, and it's 9:38, so whatever, whatever resonates, look forward to future discussions. If you all have any questions, Sylvia's the one that set us up, and appreciate her involvement and invite on this. Look forward to seeing how best we can help you all, and hope you all get some sleep tonight because my flight's out at 4:30 in the morning.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Johnson? Councilmember Meyer.
My only, it's not really a question, but man, where were you years ago? We could have used so many, but I'm just happy to know that there is something now because we don't want to redo what we did in the past, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor. You all have a good rest of the night.
Thank you so much. What is left out of it, huh? All right, counsel, excellent presentation. It was almost under 45 minutes, but you got, you got waylaid a couple of times. We'll move on to items for individual consideration. Consider an actual resolution of R-2024-186, providing direction to the city manager to combine public hearing and 15-day notice for a single joint meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission, a city council to be held on January 16, 2025, for the consent of Wildwood Municipal Utility District of Bastrop County Municipal Utility District Number 5, Ironwood, providing for repealing clause and establish an effective date. Mr. Rosales.
Mayor, council, this is, we received a request from two MUDs. We have a city ordinance that requires municipal utility district creations and amendments have a public hearing and notices for both planning and zoning in city council. Requires a 15-day notice for both a public hearing for P&amp;Z and then an additional 15-day notice for a public hearing at council. We're asking to combine those notices for the same meeting on the same date because we're having a joint workshop for both P&amp;Z and council. So, just to streamline things, the same 15-day notice would be for the creation in the amendment. One is a creation for one MUD, one is an amendment for the other MUD. There is no state law requirements for the public hearing, but our local ordinance is more restrictive than state law. The local ordinance does, though, give us the ability to have council give us direction for changing that, and that's the code section there, section 13.05.003G, says that follow the same review procedure set forth in this article. However, the city council has sole discretion and may shorten the time period set out for consideration for particular petition. And so, council has the direction or discretion to shorten or modify that. So, what we're asking is to, instead of, we're going to have two public hearings, but they're going to be on the same date. So, we're going to notice for the same date.
Mr. Harris, can y'all take that conversation outside? Thank you so much. Continue, sir.
Sorry. The 15-day notice would be for the same, we're going to notice the same, but we're going to notice it for the same date, so that at the P&amp;Z meeting on the 16th for both council and public. So, we'll have two public hearings just on the same date, and we'll send out a notice that states that. Any questions?
Councilmember Lee.
So, we have a meeting on the 14th. You're suggesting a meeting on the 15th, and now we're having a meeting on the 16th.
A joint meeting on the 16th, yes.
You have a joint, already scheduled workshop.
It'll be a very...
I know, but you're throwing in now the 15th possibly for what Mayor Protem asked for.
Correct.
So, is there a way to do that on the 16th as well? Include that in the workshop?
Potentially. It may be an abbreviated version, but yes.
For the wastewater information? For, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions?
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes, who is making this request? Are the, are the MUDs?
The MUD creator. Yeah, so one of them is, so the Bastrop, I'm sorry, let me make sure because I've got a ton of MUDs. So, the Wildwood Municipal Utility District is doing a amendment. They're adding additional parcels to there. They're adding three parcels to their already curated MUD. The other one is the Bastrop County Municipal Utility District Number 5, which is the Ironwood MUD.
And so, they are requesting an abbreviated period?
Well, yes, they both, we've had these both in the queue for a while, and they both have seen this section, made that request, and so, we're asking if we can do it on that same date. If not, then we will just notify for, on the first, for the 14th, or for the next P&amp;Z meeting, which won't be until the end of the month. The problem is the P&amp;Z meetings aren't for one month, at the end of each month, and so, it adds an extended period. So, we would have to do the 15-day notice for the end of the month in January, and then take it to the immediate 15-day notice again, and then catch the council meeting on, in February. So, it extends it by almost two months.
Okay. I'm not usually a fan of abbreviating any type of public noticing requirement, or requirement or suggestions, or, but is, like, what kind of, like, what kind of, in these, in these public notices, what kind of pushback, what kind of responses do we usually get?
So, so a MUD is a, an entity that's created, is a governmental entity that's created. The Wildwood MUD is almost a buddy in the Travis County line.
So far out.
So, it is, it really has minimal to no effect. It's not in our service area, the likelihood of us serving...
Think it has eight total.
Yeah.
Because of the 200-foot rule for the parcels, and the parcels are so large there, I think there's only eight people that we have to notify for that MUD. And I think for the other MUD, it's...
And Ironwood is the agreement that you just heard is the other MUD. And that is going hand in hand with the development agreement.
Are these normally contentious?
No.
Okay, just...
I'm, no, and we've done quite a few of them, and no, I've never had one that was contentious.
Okay. Just wanted to check if we're abbreviating. I just want to make sure.
It's more the zoning, and this has nothing to do with zoning, right? This is just specific to the MUD creation or amending the MUD.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes, I'm all for efficiency, so I'm motion to approve.
I'd motion with Councilmember Meyer, second with Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the robe.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rosales. We'll move on to item 6B. Consider an actual resolution number R-2024-187 regarding a request from Councilmember Lee to authorize the city manager to pay for travel in an amount of $348.35. Madam City Manager.
Mayor and council, this is really an item about the council policing the council itself. Councilmember Lee sent a request to the Assistant City Secretary for Travel. We don't really have a policy for council per se for travel. I was not copied in that initial email. The normal bullets for travel are the TML Association, the TAMCC Elected Official Training, the TML Annual Conference, which takes up the bulk of the council budget, Economic Development Newly Elected Officials, Small Cities Conference, and then the regional meetings. Councilmember Lee has become a member of an affiliate organization with TML for which she would receive credit hours for continuing education, but absent a policy from the council, this is really a council decision on whether or not we're going to pay travel for something that is out of the ordinary for Councilmember Lee. And we've already paid for the hotel, so council has the option to, one, require Councilmember Lee to reimburse the city, two, approve the expense, and/or also include the expense for per diem and mileage. The total amount is $348.35, and the hotel that's already been paid is $142.98.
Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you, mayor. So, I've been part of TABCCM for the three years that I've been on council, and the city has always covered the expense for the, what do you call it, to join?
Membership.
The membership. The city is, I was, I was told the, by the prior city manager and prior council members and mayor that that was covered because it is a TML affiliate. So, for the three years that I've been on council, that fee has been paid as well as travel in terms of hotel. When I think of travel, I think of hotel expenses, but those expenses have always been paid. In addition to those expenses, I attend a lot of webinars, I attend meetings at the TML office. The city has always paid for those. I, I have always sent the city secretary the request. When our former city secretary was here, that request always went to the city secretary. That was the process that I've followed for three years. When the Assistant City Secretary confirmed the reservation on November the 11th, she included the city manager on that confirmation. So, that's, that room was booked, or not the room, yeah, the room was booked because I didn't have to pay to go to the meeting. It was a board meeting, and I serve on the board for TABCCM. That room was booked on November the 11th. I did not find out till the day before that there was an issue. I did not find out till the day before that there was an issue. But this has been a, something that I've been doing for three years that I've been on council. I don't know why it's an issue now. The email request, as I always did before our former city secretary left, was, can you please set up this reservation, which is the process that I've done. No one's ever told me to do anything differently but before now. TABCCM is not just an affiliate of TML. They are very integrated in TML. They kick, TABCCM is responsible for kicking off the annual conference each year with the golf tournament. TABCCM is also the highest contributing, they give money back to TML. And they are the highest contributor of giving money back to TML because of the fundraising that they do for the scholarship. The meetings that I attend and the trainings that I attend are in line with TML's education. We talk about legislative, we talk about how to be better in our communities, we talk about programs that we can offer residents. We use TML to create those educational programs for our TML, our, our TABCCM membership. So it's not just an affiliate organization that I just decided that I want to be part of. And it's no different, TML has many affiliate organizations, one of which is TCMA. So TCMA costs are covered by council. So I don't understand why I'm being asked now to pay for something that the city has been paying for, for three years. When this was planned on the 11th of November, no one said anything, and the day before, I get an email saying there's an issue.
So the response to that is, as Councilmember Lee stated, there are many affiliate organizations, and I don't know where to draw the line. The requests that you sent to the prior city secretary, you sent them to the prior city secretary. This is the first one I see. There is an organization for Texas Park and Recreation. Councilmember Meyer could decide she wants to go to Park and Recreation. There's the American Planning Association, there's the American Waterworks Association. All of those lead to more educated council. That's not the issue. It's where do we draw the line and where do we do the budget? And so council has to police itself. If they want to pay the amount, I have no problem paying the amount. But you need to police yourselves, because we'll end up in a budget amendment process, and as you've pointed out, you don't want to see those anymore. And the TCMA dues are part of my contract.
I understand they're part of your contract. My, my thing is, I've been doing this for three years, and never had I had an issue with it until the day before I got ready to leave on a trip that actually took me four hour, or three hours, because it was raining that, that, when I left that Friday. I didn't ask for the, I didn't ask for a stipend. My email to her was simply asking, as I've done in the past, I follow no different process than I have done in three years, which was to book the room. I could argue, we sent some council members and, and the chair of our P&amp;Z down to Louisiana for two days to basically party. That wasn't in the budget, and that didn't come before council for approval. So what I don't understand is why, I, I have the floor, sir.
I'm sorry.
I don't understand why is it all of a sudden now I'm having to bring everything that I need to get done and have been doing for three years to council for approval? When you have a budget amount of $50,000, that you can approve anything under $50,000, I'm having to bring $348 to council for an educational event that's covered by TML that I haven't had to do in the past? I don't think that that's fair. I don't, I don't mind doing rules. I agree with you. I'm not opposed to that at all. I do think, but I, but I don't want to exclude TABCCM just because it's TABCCM, and of course, it's got, in these, if we set rules, it's going to have to be across the board. I think it's unfair to make me have to pay for this now, or to say I have to reimburse the city, when I've been doing this since I've been on council and it's never been an issue. So set some rules, and then we go forth, but to say that I now have to pay the city back for something that the city's been paying for, which I understood was the policy. I understood that was the process.
So two things. One, you're addressing the questions to me. The policymakers are up there, not here. That's number one. Number two, the trip that the, those folks took to, these two council members took to Louisiana, they paid for themselves. They did not have city funds pay for those. That's number two. So let's get that super correct. The third is, again, council has to police itself. Period, said, done. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know what organizations that are, but that's why this item is in front of you today, is council sets a budget, council sets where you guys are going. I don't care which organization, I just need direction. But the questions should be there, because that's the policymakers. That's the policymakers, and you need to police yourselves as to who, what, when, travel. You're right, these didn't come to me before, they're in front of me now. It's, as we've identified with a lot of things in the city, there are no procedures or policies or standard operating procedures that need to get put in place in order for us to, as you say, be fair across the board.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
Yes, and, and my comment is, is exactly that. Because if we don't have policy and we don't continue with a, a, a fair process for everyone, and we don't have policy for that, then where do we draw a line? So it's with any issues whatsoever that need to be, we need policy because questions where things are vague comes out to be a very unfair process. So I'm encouraging us to consider how we are going to move with this, because we have to have policy to follow. Basically, that's the bottom line.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Kirkland.
So, yeah, I, I got pulled into this, as the city manager said. Our trip that we took to Louisiana to thank the, the people there for helping us with our Mardi Gras, that was all entirely paid for out of my pocket. So, yeah, I didn't think that the taxpayers should pay for it, and so I took care of it. I do have some ideas on the policy. First of all, I concur with Councilperson Lee that this is what she's done for three years. She had no further input until this came up, and, you know, I would suggest that we, that we pay the, the full amount that was requested. I, I would also have a second request with that. When we went to TML, I was given a check to pay for some of my expenses, and I never even opened the envelope. I haven't cashed it, I never will cash it, so take that money and help pay these expenses, and then anything that's left could be covered, and I can make that part of a motion. And then the last thing, in terms of the policy, that we would set it so that, that payment would only be if there's multiple council members attending, or if it's for a board that council has nominated and placed a person on. So that's kind of, in general, what I think would make sense.
Councilmember Fosler.
I agree that, I don't think any of us should be caught in the crossfire of doing what we've been doing the past few years, so I think we should approve that on the full amount tonight. And just, we've discovered another policy, I think on our January, or maybe our second meeting in January, where, I think there's two or three we need to look at and just hash that out with taking Mayor Protim's suggestions tonight. I wouldn't want to create a policy tonight, because I haven't thought about it thoroughly, but I agree. We can get several of our policies tightened up in January and move forward.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Yeah, this, I, I was surprised to see it's on there. I'm not adverse to it, to creating a, a policy that covers everybody, but we have two issues before us in my mind. One is its immediate nature in her request for reimbursement. Thank y'all for agreeing that it should be reimbursed, but also to, to set policy. And we've talked about, a lot about establishing policy on various actions that, that city council needs to take on, as, as well as part of our overview and oversight of, of everything within the city. That being said, I see no other comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion that we approve the payment of the $348.35 or the remainder thereof, and that you use any of the monies that were set aside for my TML trip recently to pay the first piece of that until they're exhausted.
I have a motion from Mayor Protim Kirkland. Second. I have a segment from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Mayor Protim Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, I am so, I am so sorry. I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking right at him, Ms. Curtis. I apologize. We have somebody scheduled to speak on this?
Do you want to say anything now?
Yes, you, you, you may. It's part of the public comments.
I'm going to get you later.
I, I apologize.
This is really brief. If you want to set policy, put it on the agenda that you're setting policy. What this smacks of is the city manager continuing to, to single out and humiliate and badger Cheryl Lee. And I'm getting really sick and tired of it, and I just have to say, this is not, you're gifting to Cheryl Lee. You could have just left it at that, that, right where you started, Mr. Kirkland, to just say, she deserves to be recompensed. But I do not give you that Cheryl Lee's name and this $348 should even have been on the agenda. Set policy and stop picking on each other.
Thank you, ma'am. No other comments up there? And I apologize for not, for not catching that before the motion was taken. Motion passes unanimously. Well, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We stand adjourned.